All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Vice Chairwoman Cara Derry, and I will be presiding over this meeting. As we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for remote participation. Public participation, public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on an item, click Raise Hand and Go to Webinar in order to comment. Before being identified, all public participants will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly. Do not use the chat or question function in Go to Webinar, as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. And please limit background noise to the extent possible. As a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at RoyalPalmBeach.com/youtube. Alright, I'd like to officially call this meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, September 23rd at 7:00 PM. This time, I'd like to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Alicia, can I please have a roll call?
You bet. Alright, we will start the evening with Chairman Kamar Williams, Vice Chairwoman Cara Derry.
Present.
Commissioner David Leland, Commissioner Lauren McClellan.
Present.
Commissioner Andrew Alba.
Present.
Christopher Butler, alternate one.
Present.
And Edward Patterson, alternate two. Okay.
Alright, can I please get approval of the meeting minutes from last meeting, August 26th?
I move approval of the minutes.
Excellent.
Alright, it is motion by Commissioner McClellan and second by Commissioner Alba. Alright.
Madam Chair, if you could ask for all in favor, ask for a vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's my first time, guys, doing the leading, so bear with me.
You'll catch on real quick.
Alright, can I have all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, passes. What, what, four? Unanimous. Alright, thank you. Alright, items for discussion? We have application number 25-097AAR, Wells Fargo Paint. The applicant, Vericon Construction Company, LLC, on behalf of Wells Fargo, Royal Palm North, is requesting architectural approval in order to repair and repaint an existing building, millions, handrails, and exterior light fixtures for a property located at 11707 Okeechobee Boulevard. Pass to Mitty.
Thank you. The applicant is present? Thank you, sir. Can you state your name for the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Nicholas Saram.
Thank you. Raise your right hand for me. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so I'll swear you in, staff. And at the same time, do you both swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you both, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
No.
Thank you.
Alright, Josue?
Good afternoon. Josue Ledger, Planning and Zoning, for the record. Application before is 25-097AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval in order to repair and repaint an existing building, handrails, and exterior light fixtures. The property is located at 11707 Okeechobee Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing paint and exterior conditions of the property, which is a Wells Fargo building. This slide illustrates the proposed paint and exterior conditions of the property. This is for the north and east elevation of the building. The proposed paint scheme includes Dorian Gray SW7017 as a primary base color for the exterior of the building. Trim and accent colors will consist of Dove Tell SW7018, Original White SW7077, Gaunt Lead Gray SW7019, and Black Magic SW6991. This slide illustrates the proposed paint and exterior conditions for the south and west elevation of the building. Staff is recommending approval of application number 25-097AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation? Okay. Any commissioner comments?
None.
Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to close the floor to public comment then. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move approval application number 25097AAR.
We have... Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner McClellan and a second by Commissioner Alba. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The item passes unanimously. Thank you. Alright, item two. Application number 25-010AAR, drip bar wall sign. The applicant, Expedite the Deal LLC, on behalf of Fearler Best 358, Inc., is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage on the existing building for a property located at 11965 Southern Boulevard. Pass it over to Mitty.
Thank you. Your name, sir, for the record?
Address 6487 Peter Drive, County Chester, Ohio.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? I'll swear you in. This is also a quasi-judicial item. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the board for any ex parte disclosures.
No.
Thank you.
Alright, pass it over to Josue.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Application 25-010AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install new signage, wall, hang at marquee on the existing building. Property is located at 11965 Southern Boulevard, number 13. The proposed sign is trademarked and is intended for drip bar. This slide illustrates the proposed sign on the building facade. This slide illustrates the proposed sign details with identifying the channel lettering, as well as the dimensions of the sign. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed under canopy, which is a hanging marquee sign. Staff is recommending approval of application number 25-010AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
No.
Alright. Does the board have any comments or discussion?
None.
Nope. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. This time, I will close the floor to public comment. And do we have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve application number 25-010AAR.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Christopher Butler, alternate one, and a second by Commissioner McClellan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The application passes unanimously. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay. Onto item number three. Application number 25-078AAR, Cano Health Signage. The applicant, Signalite, Inc., on behalf of 11700 Okeechobee Boulevard, LLC, is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage on the existing building for a property located at 11700 Okeechobee Boulevard. Mitty?
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Anybody online?
No. That they're here for this application?
So, you can either proceed with the item. If there are questions, you could also, given the weather, you could skip over this one and go to the others, and we can come back to it at the end if we think somebody may be en route. Alicia, you didn't hear that anybody wasn't going to be present?
I spoke with them this morning, and they were under... They understood they needed to be here, so I have... I didn't have an email saying otherwise.
So, given that, I would probably recommend skipping over it, just to make sure they're not stuck in traffic with the weather, and then we'll come back to it, if that's okay with the board?
Okay. Do we need a motion to do that?
No, you can just skip over it. Just read the next item.
Alright. Moving on to item four. Application 25-089AAR, Mid County Vet Paint and Sign. The applicant, As You Like It Painting Company, on behalf of Cynthia Benjamin Reva Holdings, LLC, is requesting architectural approval in order to repaint an existing building and reface an existing monument sign for a property located at 11368 Okeechobee Boulevard. Mitty?
Perfect. Can you go to that podium for me? Could you give your name for the commission, please? Swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures.
No.
Thank you.
Josue?
Your Vice Chair. Application 25-078AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval in order to repaint an existing building, reface an existing monument sign. Property is located at 11368 Okeechobee Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed monument sign face change. The proposed wall with the new paint color. The proposed paint scheme includes hinting blue SW6519 as the primary base color for the building. Trim and accent colors will consist of varified air SW6525 and iron ore Staff is recommending approval of application number 25-089AAR as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Josue. Does the applicant have a presentation? Nope. Okay. Any board comment? Nope. Are there any public comment?
I have a thumbs up from online.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, I'm going to close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve application 25-09AAR.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Butler and a second by Commissioner McClellan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Okay. Item number five. Application number 25-086AAR, Southern Palms Crossing Master Sign Criteria. The applicant, Fast Sign Sarasota, on behalf of IVT Southern Royal Palm Beach 1031, LLC, is requesting architectural approval to update the master signage plan for the Southern Palm Crossing Plaza for a property located at 11001 Southern Boulevard. Mitty?
Thank you. Is the applicant present for this one? Can you go to the podium for me, sir? Go to the podium for me? And state your name for the record?
Peter Timber.
You raise your right hand. This is also a quasi-judicial item. I'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I'll turn to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Josue?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Application 25-086AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to update the existing master sign plan for the Southern Palm Crossing Shopping Center. This includes updates to the monument sign, directional signs, and identity sign. The property is located at 11001 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing master sign criteria, monument sign. Also, this slide illustrates the existing master sign criteria, monument, and identity sign. This slide illustrates the proposed master sign criteria, monument signs, which is a bit more modern. Also, this slide illustrates the proposed master sign criteria for the identity sign. Staff is recommending approval of application number 25-086AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a presentation?
This is the presentation.
Okay, great. Is there any board comment?
I have a question, sir. The sign is going to be mounted on Southern Boulevard itself or someplace in the plaza? These are along Southern Boulevard, and there's another cross street to the side. I don't recall the name of that street, but these are all existing locations. We are just using the existing structure and putting a new facade on it. If you don't know where you're going, you're just driving in circles. That's why I was curious. I've seen people do that and answer, you know, direction wherever they are. Well, hopefully, some of these updates will help with some of the traffic and directing that. That's why we're working with Invent Trust to do that. Good.
Any other commissioner comments? No. Is there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, I will close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move approval application number 25086AAR.
Motion by Commissioner McClellan.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Alba. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Application number 25-093SE, RP Logistics Limited Manufacturing. The applicant, Smiley and Associates, Inc., on behalf of RP Logistics, LLC, is requesting special exception use approval to allow for an additional 35,540 square feet of manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly, i.e. cabinetry, et cetera, within the existing warehouse building located in the IL Limited Industrial Zoning District for a property located at 100 Aldi Way. Mitty?
Thank you. Your name, sir, for the record?
Morris Smiley.
Thank you.
You know the drill. Raise your right hand for me. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Josue?
Application 25-093SE. The applicant is requesting special exception approval to allow for an additional 35,540 square feet of manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly, i.e. cabinetry, et cetera, within the existing warehouse building located within the industrial limited zoning district. The property is located at 100 Aldi Way. And reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village comp plan, and conformance with the village development standards for the industrial limited zoning district, more specifically whether the proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of the comp plan, whether it complies with all development regulations of the village code, whether it does not have any adverse environmental impact, or does not have adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, or does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, or does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties, whether it's compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, whether the proposed special exception does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, or not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties, whether the proposed special exception will not seriously reduce the quality or quantity of light and air available to adjacent properties, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. This slide illustrates the reference site plan showing the 35,540 square foot affected bay highlighted in red. And reviewing the proposed special exception use, application staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to village standards. Staff is requesting a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council for application number 25-093 and resolution number 25-29. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josue. Mr. Smiley, do you have a presentation for us?
Not a presentation, just wanted to add that this is a similar type of situation as a previous special exception that was approved, where everything is interior. Things are brought in by kind of like Amazon shipment or things like that, and they're taken in, they're cleaned, and then they're packaged up and they're sent back out. It's a medical... Medical device cleaning company, so very limited, you know, movement on the outside of the building. It's mostly all interior, so just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. Do we have any commissioner comments? Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve application number 25-093SE.
Motion by Commissioner Butler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan. All those in favor? Those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go back to item three. Application number 25-078AAR, Cano Health Signage. The applicant, Signalite, Inc., on behalf of 11700 Okeechobee Boulevard, LLC, is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage on the existing building for a property located at 11700 Okeechobee Boulevard. The applicant present?
Yes.
I'll turn it over to you, Mitty.
Thank you. Your name, sir, for the record?
Jose Pacheco.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? This is a quasi-judicial item. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Josue?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Application before is 25-078AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage on an existing building. This slide illustrates the proposed wall sign on the building. Staff is recommending approval of application number 25-078AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation for us, sir?
Just say this. The job is very simple. It's replace the actual sign with a new name of the company. The use doesn't change because there is the medical office. It's very simple.
Thank you. Do we have any commissioner comments? Alright. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
This time, I will close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move approval application number 25-078AAR.
Motion by Commissioner McClellan?
Second motion to approve application number 25-07AAR.
We have a second by Commissioner Butler. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. We will down... Move down to item number seven. Application number 25-012SPM, Luff's Road Site Plan Modification. The applicant, Urban Design Studio, on behalf of the Tittle Royal Property Owners Association, Inc., is requesting a major site plan modification in order to modify the previously approved site and landscaping plans to increase the sidewalk widths to 10 feet, include sidewalk cutouts along Luff's Road to accommodate the approved trees, revise the Royal Palm specification to pick minimum five-foot gray wood, and update the plans to reflect utilities for a property located on Southern Boulevard approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7, US 441. The applicant is present. I'll turn it over to Mitty?
Thank you. Could you state your name for the record?
Lancy Jean-Louis.
Thank you. Raise your right hand for me. You also know the drill. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Okay. Josue?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Application before is 25-012 Site Plan Modification. The applicant is seeking a major site plan modification in order to modify the previously approved site and landscape plans to increase the sidewalk width by 10 feet, include sidewalk cutouts along Luff's Road to accommodate the approved trees, revise the landscape plan to modify the planting height of the Royal Palms along Erika Boulevard and Luff's Road, along with various other modifications to the landscape plan. The property is located with along Southern Boulevard approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7, US 441. This slide illustrates the overall proposed site plan that identifies the both roads that is part of this application, Erika Boulevard, which runs east to west, Luff's Road, which runs north and south. This slide illustrates the proposed Erika Boulevard landscape plan with the affected area highlighted in red. On the screen, there is a sheet key that pretty much going to guide you to which segment of the road you're looking at in front of you. Right now, this is the segment that is closest to 441, which is the most eastern portion of Erika Boulevard. So as we move westward, you can see sheet LP3 is sort of in the middle, and the everything that is red is what's been modified. This slide also identifies proposed changes along Erika Boulevard, LP-4. And this slide illustrates the changes along Erika Boulevard, which is at the most western segment of the streets. This slide illustrates the proposed Luff's Road, which runs north and south, landscape modifications. Overall, the proposed site plan and landscape plan modification is in conformance with the village requirements for the general commercial zoning district. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding application number 25-012 and resolution number 25-04 as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josue. Do you have a presentation for us?
I do. Josue did a good job covering it. I'm just going to focus on one quick slide here. What we did as part of this modification and close coordination of staff is we just went ahead and expanded all the sidewalks off of Erika as well as Luff's Road to 10 feet. And as part of that sidewalk expansion to 10 feet, staff and the applicant, we agreed on a solution to allow the location of the existing Royal Palms. They were previously located outside of the six-foot sidewalk with that expansion into 10 feet, and trying to be wary of not placing the sidewalk in the utility easement, which is directly south of that. We've just provided a 2.5 by 4-foot cutout to allow the planting of those Royal Palms with the flexible porous paving material you see here. So that way, you get the continuous 10-foot sidewalk for pedestrian and cyclist enjoyment and safety, but also keeping the landscape material that was initially contemplated for the plan. So that's really the gist of the application, and then in coordination, providing cross-sections in more detail for the landscape plan, as well as enhancements in the roundabout landscape. So it was just a collaborative effort with staff on this process, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there any commissioner comments, questions? Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve application number 25-012SPM.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Butler, a second by Commissioner Alba. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. That concludes the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I need to motion. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner McClellan, a second by Commissioner Alba. All those in favor? All those opposed? Alright, moving on to our local planning agency meeting. It's Tuesday, September 23rd. Alicia, can we have the record reflect that our... Roll call?
Staff has stayed the same through this meeting.
Commission... Or, excuse me, the LPA as well. Staff, the board.
The board.
Perfect. That's all you need for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have an approval of minutes from the August 26th, 2025 local planning agency meeting?
I move approval of minutes.
Approval... Motion by Commissioner McClellan, a second by Commissioner Butler. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Items for discussion. Ordinance number 1060 proposes to amend the village code of ordinances at Chapter 26, zoning, Article 3, administration and procedures at Section 26-40, minor amendments to previously approved site plans, to add additional modifications that can be processed administratively through minor site plan modification.
Make a motion to postpone this item to the Tuesday, October 28th, LPA hearing.
So move...
Alright. Motion to move the ordinance discussion to the October 28th, 2025 meeting. We have a second by Commissioner Alba. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, our next meeting is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner McClellan, second by Commissioner Butler. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Have a great night, everyone.
Night. Good night, everyone.